We're already getting started in about one minute here. I just want to remind people that this is a public hearing. I'll kind of give a brief overview of what we're doing here. And our fellow MLAs will make some comments, but we really are looking to hear from anyone who wants to speak. And I know we have about five of you here, so I encourage you to think of some questions or make some comments. It really would be appreciated. I also know we do have Inuvikten and Gwich''in interpreters here. If anybody needs those services. Our translation equipment, the audio did not arrive, didn't make it on the flight, but they are here in person, so if you need those services. So firstly, my name is Ryland Johnson. I am the MLA for Yellowknife North. I am Chair of this committee. This is the Standing Committee on Government Operations. I'm also MLA Lisa Semler in MLL Caitlin, Cleveland. As well as this is our researcher, Nigel Woodruff. And Cynthia James, who is our committee clerk, who keeps us all in line. What are we doing here today? About three and a half years ago, the 19th Assembly made it a priority to implement the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. The Premier went away, she worked with the Council of Leaders. Yeah? Of course. Oh wow, yeah, that's going to pick me up way better. And one of the things that the Premier did and the GNWT did, working with a variety of Indigenous governments, is create this piece of legislation. It has had first and second reading. After second reading in our legislature, it goes to a committee, that is us, and then we have a decision to make. We can vote to recommend that the legislation is approved as is, it goes into the legislature, it becomes a law. We can propose amendments to it, change it how we see fit, or we can vote it down and say we don't believe that the GNWT should be doing this. Those are essentially our three options before us. We go out, we hear from the public, we try to make recommendations, we work back and forth with the Premier and Indigenous governments for any changes we feel need to be made. A little history. So what is the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples? There are copies of it up front. I'm not going to go through it in detail. There are 46 articles, speaking from, you know, what activities can happen on Indigenous lands, to language, to culture, to education. It is a very wide-reaching document that is aspirational at times and extremely technical at times. And, you know, it took many decades to get here. There are elders we have spoken to in this territory who actually went to Geneva and worked to get the UN to adopt the declaration. Most notably, it passed 143 to four in the United Nations with Canada voting against it. Canada lobbied very hardly not to implement the United Nations declarations on the rights of Indigenous peoples. One of the reasons for that is that within there, it requires, a number of sections require the free prior and informed consent of Indigenous peoples before resource extraction and activities can take place on their lands. Obviously, Canada has a long history of extracting resources without the consent of Indigenous peoples, so Canada actively lobbied not to pass the UN declaration and not to have that language in it. But it passed, and then about a decade later, after more lobbying, Canada finally signed on. And most recently, this federal government has agreed to implement the UN declaration. They have a law passed already which is very similar to the one which the GNWT is now proposing. British Columbia is also on this same path. The law that is before us, in its simplest form, commits the government to create a plan to implement undrip, which is, you know, not the strongest thing, but it doesn't just do that. It requires any future law that the GNWT passes be consistent with undrip. It requires our Attorney General to review all laws and publish a public statement, making sure that those laws are in fact consistent with undrip. So it really is, once if passed, a step to make sure that this work continues on. It kind of binds the next government to working with Indigenous governments to implement the UN declaration. I think that is about all for me. I will turn it over to Emily Cleveland to see if you have any comments. That's what I meant when I pointed that way.
Thank you. So, one of the things that, you know, with committee, and I think, I guess it was kind of for people that don't know, as we're regular MLAs, so this legislation is drafted by Cabinet. Cabinet drafts the legislation. They drafted it with the Council of Leaders, who the Premier and Cabinet created this, the Council of Leaders at the beginning of this assembly, to work on common issues. And they brought, undrip was one of them, I think. They had a number of different things that they have done. So, most of the people, I had attended one or two of the meetings as the Chair of the Special Standing Committee on Reconciliation and Indigenous Affairs. And so, the people that were around the table were mostly the regional, like, so like, the Chair of IRC, the Chair of GTC, the Chair of the SOTU, Métis Nation, you know, a lot. And then there were some individual community leaders. You had the Delanee Government, Kovalake. I know that the SOTU, pretty much every one of their community leaders attends this. So, this legislation was drafted with their, they created an executive working group. So, the executive working group that were appointed by each of the Indigenous leaders, or the Indigenous groups, appointed somebody to work on this, and they worked on this legislation in collaboration with Cabinet. And then with the process, we don't, we're not privy to any of that work, or still, at the end of March, that's when we were provided with the legislation that came between those two groups and as committee of this committee. Now it's our job to go out and hear from the public, to say whether you agree with it, are there things that you think it should, we could recommend changes in this legislation, or you disapprove of the legislation and why. There's different parts of the legislation. I think it was brought up in one of our community meetings yesterday on the Action Plan Committee, because there's, in the legislation, there's actually an Action Plan Committee to roll out this legislation. And it doesn't really speak to who's on that committee, who makes up that committee, and who's holding them accountable, and those types of things. But for the most part, I think, when we look at this declaration for Indigenous people, it's a step in the right direction, because any new laws, any new legislation, has to be looked at underneath this lens. And I used the example yesterday as like the motion that I made in the House on land leases and stuff like that. In the IFA, you know, it specifically states to lease, like fees and not having to pay fees as Inuvialit. And that's in our land claim. So, Northwest Territories drafted the New Land, Territorial Lands Act, but it's going against our land claim, and it shouldn't. Like, it should be in compliance, like, the land claim supersedes what any NWT legislation. So I think with undrip, we would be able, as Indigenous people, have more power to say, no, it doesn't follow this, so you've got to go back to the drawing table again to fix this. So, I think that just kind of gives it more context as to how this legislation could be used as a tool.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. My name's Caitlin Cleveland. I'm the MLA for Kam Lake, which is in Yellowknife, and grew up there, and am, like my colleagues here, am representing as an MLA for my first term. And really see my role here today as an opportunity to listen and learn. One of the concerns that has come to my attention is, for example, I have constituents who are living within their traditional territory, I have constituents who are living outside their traditional or land settlement area. And so how do they, for example, as an Inuvialit living in Yellowknife, how do they have a voice in this legislation or within this action committee if they don't have that direct line or link to their leadership here, for example, in Inuvik? And so that's one of the concerns that I have heard from the people who I represent down in Yellowknife and how they might play that role. And then also in terms of, not just, you know, going forward, there is in this legislation a way for, to make sure that the government is following this legislation and that new legislation is standing up to the intent of the United Nations declaration. But this Action Plan Committee really looks at past legislation of the Northwest Territories and prioritizes past pieces of legislation and policy in order to make sure that those pieces as well are standing up to the intent of the United Nations declaration. And so that work as far as what's being done within the action committee, how are those pieces of legislation prioritized? And how are the constituents that I represent, who might be living outside of their settlement region or their traditional lands, how do they have a role to play in ensuring what pieces of legislation get prioritized? Because, for example, one of the things I hear the most about is healthcare or housing. And there might be pieces within that, especially policy, that people want to see prioritized and to be held up against the United Nations declaration. So I really look forward to sitting here and listening and learning to what each of you might have to share today. Thank you for having us.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for us?
Just introduce yourself.
So, my name's Nicole. I'm from Inuvik. I just had a question. So, reading through the bill, yeah, I think it outlines a lot of great things about recognizing Indigenous governments' inherent rights and then supporting them as they, I think, pull down those jurisdictions and implementing them. I was just curious if this act is implemented, if that's going to change sort of the government's position on, like, for example, the Inuvialits' child and family law, how the government changed their position on that? Like, if that's going to change, if they're going to be more supportive of them having, like, that final say, like, their law superseding the GNWT's? So I'm just curious how this, if this will help, if this will be a tool that'd be used for that.
I'll give it the first shot. You know, I, we have, as committee, have made that comment, that it's a little ridiculous for the GNWT, on one hand, saying, yeah, we want to implement the UN declaration, and then taking the IRC to court, on the other hand, for something that seems to be clearly implementing the declaration. I wouldn't say that, you know, we're going to pass this, and then tomorrow, the GNWT is going to change their mind and drop their court case, but it puts them in a situation that seems completely irreconcilable. And I think going forward, you would just not have a government able to make that kind of stance. Whether it corrects, you know, a case that is before the courts right now, I don't know. We, as this committee, we reviewed the IRC's Child and Family Services Law, we supported it, we thought this is the model that the whole territory should be using, and we think that undrip enables future governments to do that. So, whether the Premier's going to kind of give her a head shake and drop that case is not a question I can answer, but I think we will make that statement when we, in our committee report, that, you know, you can't be kind of saying this on this hand and doing completely innocent things on the other hand. Anyone else want to add?
So, and I sit on the Standing Committee for Social Development as well, which has had the opportunity to speak with IRC in regards to the court case, and speak with the GNWT, and has a much similar stance to this committee as well. And what my understanding is, at this point in the court case, is that all of the information has been heard by all parties, and they're in the process now of making a decision at the Supreme Court level. And so as far as people, like, parties removing themselves, that, my understanding is that ship has sailed, and they are now just awaiting a ruling from Quebec or from the Supreme Court. And Ryland is the lawyer at the table that can give me the proper language on that. And that we're at the process now of waiting for a ruling on that. And so, they're so far gone that that should be anywhere from like the next two weeks to the next four months, that they're expecting a decision to come down on that one.
Hello, Rory Woodruck. I'm Joseph. I'm the Chair of the Inuit Community Corporation. I think you all are somewhat familiar with the Inuvialit Final Agreement, the Gwich''in Convent's Land Claim Agreement, and all the other modern treaties in the territories. Each of those agreements have signatories, including the people, Aboriginal groups, the applicable Aboriginal groups, the applicable organizations, and then the government, territorial and federal governments. How do you see this legislation, this roadmap, this guideline, as far as implementation of the declaration? How do you see this legislation supporting the obligations of each of those signatories, each of those parties to those agreements? Okay? Any, because as far as I'm concerned, I'm not speaking for the Inuvialit Regional Corporation or the Chair of Community Corporation. My understanding, my belief, my passion is that it's an agreement between us and the federal government. The territorial government is obviously in the loop there. So, you would expect that the territorial government would understand that and respect that in all levels, in all aspects of that land claim agreement, of those agreements. In terms of their responsibility to consult, their responsibility to do whatever it is that they were required to do as far as that agreement is implemented. How do you see this legislation supporting that whole situation?
Yeah, I'll start. So we have heard from quite a few governments with, you know, settled land claims, that they've said, this is fine, but there's still sections of our land claim you haven't implemented. There's still funding to flow in areas, there's still things you are not upholding, and I think they will prioritize getting that work done. You know, it kind of has to move parallel along with the Implementation Act. They're certainly at the table and drafting the action plan. So, we've heard those concerns. I guess the main thing I think that this will do is, right now, the GNWT has, you know, under the Canadian Constitution, has a duty to consult. And really, the aim here is to move consultation to consent. And that's going to look different in different areas, but it's going to say, listen, I'm a minister and I want to build X piece of infrastructure on your traditional territory, and the standard there is not, I have to have a bunch of meetings and then I go away and make the decision regardless. The standard should become, and you have to agree, we have to sit down. And I think we've heard pretty clearly that this is going to have to be adopted for the North, it's going to be a lot of one-on-one bilaterals working with the Chairs of Indigenous Governments to kind of find out what that looks like on their territory. Yeah, and clearly, there's a lot of work to do, that if you're not honoring the treaties that you have right now, you know, step zero is already broken. And I think those issues have been flagged, and we will continue to flag them. At the very least, step one has to be living up to the land claims that we have. I will, well, I'll turn it over to you or anyone else who else has a comment.
If there was any recommendation, it would be in that area, that this, this, this sort of report, is there room for revision or additions or edits on this? I would suggest, highly recommend that that issue be addressed in this report, and that is that the territorial government has an obligation to respect the provisions of the land claim agreements. And, yeah, I think I kind of mentioned the reason already. So, I would strongly recommend that that, you know, that be reviewed and there be some revisions, and so that this reflects how you would engage, and how the government would engage, and it's true that the rights of the Inuvialit, the rights of the SOTU, the rights of the, all of the land claim agreements, and the people are protected, and the governments are held accountable, particularly the territorial government. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And we've heard that out in clear from a lot of groups, and you know, we've heard from a lot of groups that the problem is GNWT, that Canada is, you know, they're making much better progress on honoring their agreements than the GNWT is. So, we will take that message back. Any further questions, comments from anyone?
Yeah, sure. Do you have any, like, actions that are actually set out to happen if this is implemented? I think it's sometimes hard to speak to, speak to the fact of, yes, these are great things that you're recognizing and you want to do, but is there anything that is, like, you can say, this is going to happen, this is our plan, not, this is what we're hoping to do, or this is what we're going to help guide us?
You know, I wish, and I do truly wish I could say, this will be passed and then X will happen. You know, sadly, that work has not been completed. The goal of this is it binds the government to create an action plan. Canada is, has their action plan before the Assembly of First Nations right now, and it's getting some pushback, so there are things in there. I think, you know, there are some very likely things to happen. All the resource legislation you would see amended, which, the resource legislation relating to mining, to oil and gas, to forestry, will have to introduce an element of free prior informed consent. So, you know, right now, if the standard is, hey, we want to log here, we're going to talk to you, it's going to say, no, on this, we're going to identify your territory, and you have to agree to it. So that would be, you know, kind of those early steps, but all of those details have not been hammered out. I think we, as committee, have quite a few things we've heard and we want to prioritize. Language is definitely one, we have repeatedly heard. Right, increasing official languages rights, rights to immersion schooling, those are things that we would prioritize in our previous work. Emily Semler has spoken to ongoing fights with charging rights holders with lease fees on their traditional territory. I think that's a no-brainer that the government could do, but I can't sit here and say those things are going to be done, you know, the minute this law is passed. I can negotiate with the Premier and say that needs to be part of this, and it needs to be done early. Any other future questions, comments?
And I think that's what he said there at the end, that's, one of the tools is of regular members. We, on our side of the House, have the numbers to say yes or no, and then that holds the government to say, like, if we recommend some of these changes, and once, once we're done our consultation, what we'll do is we'll actually probably look at our legislation and say, it was very, it was very broadly spoken that this part of the legislation needs to be amended before we go into third reading, and the minister, which would be the Premier, can agree or disagree. And then we have the opportunity, in third reading, to actually put a motion on the floor to change parts of the legislation, if we have the numbers on our side, because we do have the numbers. And usually, what'll happen is, they'll come to the table and negotiate with us, because they know that we'll stand strong against Cabinet if there needs to be some significant changes or some stronger wording, because I think that's some of the things that even we see in some of our land claims, that we see that there's wording in there that doesn't hold, like, you know, the terms may and shall, and so government will use those in our, against us in some of our own agreements to say, well, we don't have to do this, because economically we can, we have the final say. But under the undrip legislation, is that really in the intent of under undrip? No, right? So, I think that's why it's so important that we hear from people on what they want us to bring back to Cabinet and what they feel like is a very important, strong thing that needs to be in here. So, in order for us to be able to drive that change before the end of this government, because if we don't get it done by the end of this government, then this bill dies, and it's got to start all over in the next government. And it starts all over again with working with the groups, drafting legislation, second, first and second reading, consultation like we're doing now, so.
And I'm glad Lisa brought that up, because this bill will end up on the floor of the House, to either be passed, amended, or shot down in August. And we're done at the very end of August. And so, even if we put forward recommendations of how to, not just how to amend the bill, but how maybe that committee might prioritize items, it will be left to the 20th Assembly to really put that committee together and have them see their goal, which is to sit down and create that action plan. And so, within this legislation, we really want to get it right as far as, you know, who sits on the action plan? How do people feed information from the, or to the action plan committee? And how does information come out of that committee? Because it'll really be the 20th Assembly that pushes, pushes that committee to do this work and to identify or to listen to what they identify as priorities. And so even people of the Northwest Territories, it would be so important for them to know who sits on that action plan committee as well, because those are the people they're going to want to lobby to if they want to see a certain piece of legislation prioritized
Were there questions or comments?
My name is Joseph Kurnegurski, member of the public. I think all in all, the legislation is a good step forward, but there are questions that I would have with regards to legislation. And one of them is, if there's implementing undrip, implementing fully, to fully implement undrip in places like land claim settlement areas, does this mean that, I know it's mentioned in the whereas, where it mentions that Indigenous rights are not frozen and can evolve? I ask these questions more of, and some of the agreements are ceding surrender clauses. So I'm wondering, I think it's really important that GNWT itself asks itself those questions on how far they are willing to go to fully implement undrip, with some of the examples I mentioned, like ceding surrender clauses. I think it's really important that GNWT asks itself that question, especially on what is open for discussion and what is not. I think having a clear set of, I don't know, game rules or expectations from GNWT will help and actually aid discussions on things like free prior and informed consent. Not only that, but in terms of self-government negotiations, I think the, one of the questions that GNWT and government, I guess Canada as well, needs to ask themselves is, are they willing to open up land claim agreements to fully implement it? That I think is a really important question that government needs to answer, because it's so, I mean, it'll have a wide-ranging impact on what they currently have now. Things like wildlife management, land use development, economic development, and especially self-government negotiations. Having those types of questions answered in advance, I think, would be useful to aid in those discussions. We talked about legislation, I know undrip speaks to being able to have decision-making powers, and one example I can use is the MBR may right now say, like, the Aboriginal groups under that can recommend board members to the federal minister, and currently, they're not able to, and it's up to the minister whether to accept and reject those people. It's not up to the Aboriginal governments. It's not up to the Aboriginal government and, and sometimes the minister can reject those people without any, um, reason why. They don't even have to give a reason, they can just reject them. So there's lots of legislation that, like to fully implement undrip, I'm really still not sure what that means, um, from the government perspective. And I think that's something that they should ask itself so that there's a clear expectation of the public on, on what it means and what they are willing to do. And, and that involves Canada as well. Also, you know, open up land claim agreements, that's fine, um, and stuff like that, but at least if you know what, what's there and willing to talk about to fully implement and protect, it's really important stuff. Saying all that, I think the legislation in general is, is a good step forward, but there are questions, uh, especially in how to implement some of the articles from under, under this, under the current structures that we have. So it's going to be a lot of work, I don't know, but having those basic questions answered would, would help guide the process, I think.
Yeah, we will take all those questions back and we'll try and get the premier on record before this is passed on all of those. I, you know, I, we throughout this assembly have been asking the premier, uh, to, you know, not take a position on including seed and surrender clauses in future land claims. And, and, you know, it kind of took GNWT kicking and screaming to finally admit that they do not want seed and surrender language, whether they're going to go the next step and say, we'll open up existing land claims and remove it. You know, I, I don't, we haven't got that out of them yet. Uh, I, I think, and sadly, even if we pass this law tomorrow, there's probably a lot of work to do with Canada on reopening the MVRMA. You know, that i- it's a monumental task and changing those co-management bodies. And, uh, a- and I think it's, it's fair to say, where is GNWT going to draw the line? What, what are they actually going to pretend they're willing to do but not do? Uh, and we'll get those answers. That's all I can say is I, I would love to see land claims open and we could remove all those seed and surrender, you know, clauses tomorrow. I think that would be a great first step, but we need Canada and GNWT to commit to doing that.
Yep, because I think like even other things, like some of the regulatory bodies, like the, no offense to anybody in the room, but they're like the land and water boards and, and, um, things of that nature, they actually issue permits and licenses on private lands and stuff like that. So where undrip speaks to, um, First Nations having more control on, on decision-making on their lands, um, some of those co-management systems and stuff like that. But I think it's also important to note that some of these agreements that were negotiated 30, 40 years ago and finalized, um, long before, um, legislation like this. And I, I think that's something that people really, or government really needs to look at and, and try to determine whether they're willing to open those agreements or where those, what are, what is open for discussion and what's not. Thank you very much.
We've heard that concern. I think GNWT's negotiating approach is stuck in the 1990s and here we are in 2023 implementing the UN Declaration. So they have 30 years to kind of catch up. And hopefully this spurs, you know, some of that is just cultural change. There are people in the bureaucracy who, who've been doing this forever and they need to just move on a little. Uh, so we hope that this gives a tool for, you know, future, everyone just to say, look, that's what the wording says there, look at it now, now you got to change your mandate, you got to change your position on how you approach this. You know, I'm not going to lie, that's going to take time and it's going to take politicking. This is step one. Further questions, comments from anyone? Seeing none, thank you all for coming here today. Much respect. Yeah, sorry, I also just clarify, we're doing this review, uh, until August. So we are more than happy, and then the assembly ends, you know, there's an election. So it's, it's kind of make or break for the August sitting. Uh, we are always happy to hear any feedback that can be reached at committees@ntassembly.ca. That email always exists. We all check it all the time. So committees@ntassembly, if you have any feedback at any time, if you got a question, uh, we were in, we had a busy week. We were in Fort Simpson on Monday, Fort Smith on Tuesday, Yellowknife Wednesday, Tuck yesterday and Anuvi today. Uh, we're going to kind of go back as a committee, look through all our notes and, and, you know, probably book some more public hearings. We have some one-on-ones with indigenous governments to get their direct feedback with their staff. And we're going to kind of compile all that and then get with the premier and negotiate, you know, what changes need to be done and what commitments we need to get out of the GNWT to do this properly. We've heard concerns that, you know, doing this wrong i- is just more broken promises, it's going to break the trust. You, you can't say you're going to implement this and then kind of backdoor lawyer it for the next five years, but, but that's in nobody's interest. So there's certainly some concessions we have to get out of the GNWT moving forward. And we thank all of you for coming here and assisting us in doing that.